Good evening. We'd like to call the meeting to order, the reorganization meeting for January third, twenty twenty four. If I can ask you all to silence your devices. This is, uh, this meeting is being held in accordance with the nineteen seventy five Open Space Meetings Act, NJSA ten colon four dash six. Uh, annual notice has been forwarded to the New Jersey Herald and the Daily Record and posted on the bulletin board maintained in the municipal building. I would like to note that the fire exits are to my right and to the back of the room. This is not a fire exit. If I can ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we just stand for one second for a moment of silence, please? Thank you. Uh, Ms. Egan is going to read the statement of determination of the Board of County Canvassers for the election held on November seventh, twenty twenty three.
A statement of the determination of the Board of County Canvassers relative to election held in the Borough of Hopacan, County of Sussex, State of New Jersey, for the election of certain officers for said municipality on the seventh day of November two thousand twenty three. The said board does determine that the said election, the following officers, Marie Galati as mayor for your term, Jennifer Johnson, Borough Council, three year term, Rachel Rodriguez, Borough Council, three year term, will, were duly elected.
And if we could call the roll?
Mr. Hoppercamp?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Roberts?
Here.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mary Galati?
Here.
Uh, would anybody like to entertain the appointment for the council president?
Uh, yes, I'll, I'll nominate Brad Hoppercamp.
A second, yes.
And we can call the roll?
Mr. Hoppercamp?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Smith?
Yes.
I would like to welcome everyone to the Hopacan Reorganization Meeting for twenty twenty four. I would like to thank you all for taking the time to participate and involve yourself in your community and your government. We welcome our family, our friends, dignitaries. I would like to apologize for this evening's agenda ahead of time. There are going to be many boards, commissions, committees, and professionals that I will not be able to nominate this evening. It has been a set of extremely unusual circumstances by being prevented and given extremely limited access to the municipal building until December twenty ninth at nine AM. Out of the two hundred and twenty-six year history of the Borough of Hopacan, the only mayor who was not able to transition properly into position of mayor was me. I actually had access to the borough as the mayor of Hopacan for a total of twenty-one hours so far. There are still, uh, council members that I haven't had the chance to speak to yet. I haven't had the ability to find out interest and strengths, uh, for committees and commissions. So I really ask for your patience and understanding as I travel through all of this massive information presented and navigate the best practice for our meeting. Anyone who is interested in seeing the ceremonial swearing in of myself, Mayor Galati, or council persons Jennifer Johnson and Rachel Rodriguez. It is this Saturday, January sixth, at twelve noon at Saint Jude's Parish. We will also be swearing in the Fire Chief Wade Crowley, the First Assistant Chief Matt Smith, and the Second Chief Bernard Kachkowski. The residents of Hopacan have elected me as mayor because they want to change and transparency. And that is exact, that is exactly what I'm going to provide. Anyone who knows me knows that I am a policy and procedure person, and I will not put a nomination forward without doing my due diligence. Being able to move forward with new professionals is why the residents voted for myself, Jennifer, and Rachel. So I sit before you, reminding that residents are looking for change, the voters are looking for change, having integrity, transparency, and respect for all Hopacan residents is first and foremost. I look forward to getting to know the council members, um, especially, uh, ones that I have not spoken to. We need to work collaboratively for the residents of the Borough of Hopacan. I'm very excited to the new and exciting programs and events that we will actually bring to Hopacan. I'm excited to have the opportunity to serve as the mayor of Hopacan. I'm excited to work with this council and make Hopacan the best that it can be. I have had contact, um, with Congressman Tom Keen's office, um, as an example of one of our new, uh, programs that we have. And, uh, Tom Keen's office is actually going to be putting a satellite office here within the Borough of Hopacan one day a month. Um, it will be accessible for all residents within the Borough of Hopacan, not to mention all of the surrounding towns that are available also. But things like that is what we actually want to bring to the residents of Hopacan so that it's easier for people to accomplish things. And it's something that, when we bring it to the residents, it's something that they can be proud of because we're working hard to work for you. We all ran for office to make Hopacan the best that it can be. And once we were elected, we should continue and remember those sentiments because after all, isn't that what Hopacan residents deserve? Open and honest government. Every resident deserves that. So, moving forward. I will leave it up to the council as to their pleasure. I do have, uh, many different, um, boards, commissions that I cannot fill. Would you like to do them individually, or would you like me to tell you the ones first that I do not have full or, or even members for? Um, there is, uh, quite a few people that have put resumes forward and have expressed interest in boards and commissions, and there just has not been enough time in the days to speak to those people. So I just, I'm asking to, um, defer those till the seventeenth so that they, I have the ability to be able to do those. So would you like to do them individually, or do you want to do them at the same, individually or at the same time?
Uh, two things. We can do them individually. It's fine. The other thing is that just for the clarification of the audience, if we want to acknowledge, uh, some of the, some of why you're about, uh, have to deal with all the things you have to deal with. I would, I would like to make a motion now to accept the resignations and, uh, for the, uh, Environmental Commission and the, uh, members of the Environmental Commission and, uh, members of Recreation Commission and, uh, various, uh, secretaries that, uh, they sent, uh, by email at some point today.
Yes.
They, and, and you wanted me to bring that up, so I just wanted to, just so everybody knows, uh, why there is a volume of people that you still need to work on, so. It says it's appropriate time to do that.
Is that where you wanted to add correspondence to it?
Yeah, I should, I should just add the names if I could just read the names of the positions on here.
Yeah, no, that's fine. No, absolutely.
Uh, Marshal Spizer from the Recreation Commission, uh, resigned effective twelve thirty-one. Jennifer Barone from the Open Space Committee and the Environmental Commission effective, uh, December thirty-first. Lisa Hirschfield from the Open Space Committee and the Environmental Commission effective, uh, December thirty-first. William Hirschfield as a alternate to the Lake of Hopacan Commission effective November thirty twenty twenty-three. Laura Scantolbari from the Environmental Commission effective November twenty-nine. John Rapalowski from the Environmental Commission effective December thirteenth. Joel Berman from the Environmental Commission and from the Open Space Committee, both effective December thirty-first. Pat Hoppercamp from the Environmental Commission effective December thirty-first. Uh, Bradley Hoppercamp from the Environmental Commission and Beautification Committee effective December thirty-first. Alan Gilbert, uh, from the Land Use Board effective January second, twenty twenty-four. And Kristy Ray, uh, as the Recreation Commission Secretary, that was effective, uh, December twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
So we would also be looking for a motion, Dave, to
To accept the resignations.
To accept the resignations.
And send, have me send a letter thanking them for their service.
Yes, and, uh, Dave would send a letter thanking them for.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Call the roll?
Mr. Hoppercamp?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
So the Land Use Board, I do not have any nominations to put forward to you.
I could make the nomination of that mayor, uh, for the council member.
Oh, that's a little bit later. That's next.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. (laugh) Sorry. Um, so I do not have, uh, a nomination for that. Um, however, the council appointment is the class three, so we will entertain that name.
Ryan Smith.
Second.
Call the roll?
Mr. Hoppercamp?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Now, you're wearing the class one or class two member of today.
Yes, we can do the class one and class two.
Oh, I see.
Um, I think the Land Use Board has their next meeting scheduled for Tuesday, the sixteenth of January.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, uh, we, the other one is not being made. We just have to make sure we have the quone to fulfill that.
Okay. Okay.
They have ordinance?
There are current ordinance, yeah. So it would really just be the two that are, that are up this year and, uh, the other, the two ordinance that are up.
Two other off.
Yeah. They'll have a quone.
So they should have quone. We would have two ordinance in balance, so we have to show.
So we would need to, um, make a motion to accept, um, Marie Galati as class one and David Fenslaw as class two.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll?
Mr. Hoppercamp?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Okay, that moves us to the Board of Health. Uh, I believe the terms being added are Marie Galati for a full term ending in twenty-seven, Jennifer Johnson ending in twenty-six, and, uh, Councilor Rachel Rodriguez in twenty-six also.
So moved.
Second.
Um, discussion, I think, um, should we have, you have, you have three new people and there's no experienced people. Yes, you were on the board before and so was Jennifer, but should there be some, uh, consistency in transition, uh, possibly with one of, one of the two other members of an existing member?
Mayor, can I answer that?
Just two appointments, correct? So the Board of Health is, is, we are just adding to the Board of Health along with everybody else.
Okay, okay. That's what I wanted to know.
Recovery body in full.
Yes. That, okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, we have a motion. A second.
Call the roll?
Mr. Hoppercamp?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Uh, Recreation Commission, we had actually several, uh, resumes that were sent in for members of Recreation, but again, I have not thoroughly gone through those, nor have I met with all of the, um, public that's interested in those positions. We have two co-members and we have an alternate member, uh, that we have to replace. So, um, we should hopefully have that for the meeting on the seventeenth.
Make a motion to table?
Second. Um, the Environmental Commission, as you heard, we have a lot of openings on the Environmental Commission, so I do not have all of the, um, people for the Environmental Commission, so if we can make a motion to table back to the seventeenth.
Motion to table?
Second. Thank you. Um, so for open space, um, again, we have a, um, a lot of people on open space, um, that have, uh, removed themselves. So again, I actually just found that out today for the open space. So, um, if we can, uh, if I can have a motion to table that.
Make it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, council committees, I have not sat to speak to everyone yet, um, to see again strengths, weaknesses, things that everybody's great at, so I would just like to table that till the seventeenth.
Motion to table?
Second. Oh, I'm sorry. Call the roll?
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Um, the Lake of Hopacan Commission, um, we have a full member, Dan McCarthy, who will expire in twenty twenty-five, and as the alternate, um, I have myself, which will expire in one year. I'm sorry, two years, which is twenty twenty-five. Um, Dan McCarthy is actually here this evening. I've had a conversation with him. And I'm very pleased to say that we've, um, uh, come to, um, come to the idea that it would be great to have, um, Dan actually come to the council meetings to let us know everything that's happening, um, at the Lake of Hopacan Commission meetings because as we know, all of us have meetings that are in the evening and everything that's happening, so it would be nice to have Dan be able to give us, um, just a catch-up or a presentation or whatever's happening about the lakes, that we're all aware of that. Um, and then this way, we can also maybe take back our cares or concerns or anything. We can give those to Mr. McCarthy also. Um, I know when I had reached out to, um, the Lake of Hopacan Commission, um, uh, foundation, just to see memberships and whatnot and how it worked, um, you know, uh, it was, it was great to hear glowing reviews about a representative from Hopacan on that because that is not just Hopacan on that board, that's everyone on that board. So thank you, Dan, for your, your years of service. Um, can I throw a motion for Dan?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Wildlife Management Committee, uh, we do not have that in place. Um, that is, um, something that is new. Um, just waiting for a response from the, um, Fish and Wildlife and from, um, the, um, Fish and Wildlife and actually, um, there's another organization in the state that does, um, uh, the, uh, section for deer management. She hasn't gotten back to me yet, so if we can, uh, table that till the seventeenth.
Motion to table? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, the Clean Communities, um, if we can, uh, take, um, myself, um, Marie Galati as mayor, David Fenslaw as a business editor, business administrator, and Patrick Mason as DPW coordinator. Um, we can also add to that as the year is progressing because there were two residents that actually reached out that had been on it much, um, earlier in time and were actually wanting to come back, but I, again, have not had the time to speak to them, so can we table that? Or no, I'm sorry, we have a motion to accept the three members. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, Emergency Management Council, um, I do not have, again, I, I apologize, I have not spoken to all of council, so I don't have a council representative for that yet. Um, if we can just make a motion to accept, um, Marie Galati mayor, uh, Rob, our, our ambulance captain, Wade Crowley, our fire chief, Patrick Mason from DPW, and David from Administration.
I'd like to make a motion for Brad because he has past experience in these things. Um, to be the council representative now.
I believe it's mayor's appointment though, Brad.
Well, again, I'd like to have the opportunity to, to, I haven't spoken to Brad yet, out of everybody, so I can, I can definitely note that, Christine, but I, I would just like to, and I haven't asked that question of all other council members either, so if that's okay.
So motion to table?
But I'll make it.
Right, but it's for your table.
Motion.
No, we're not making a motion table.
Oh, sorry, so what do you?
Well, the motion to accept Marie, Rob, Ray, Patrick, and David, so named.
This is council. Second.
Who seconded it, Matt?
I did. Right.
The Senior Advisory Committee, um, those members that are on here, I just need to add one name to it. There was an omission of Linda Smith, who has been a, um, a member of Senior Advisory Committee before, and, um, it was just, um, left off, so if we can add Linda Smith to that. Um, and we have, um, again, I do not have the council liaison, uh, for that, um, just yet. So if we can take all of the names that are there minus the council liaison, um.
Mayor have some questions about that?
Sure.
Um, number one, uh, the, the listing that I saw of the nine members,
Hmm?
and I can't tell, this now says nine members, but I guess that was on the email earlier today. You had someone there listed, uh, Wayne Cameron,
Yes.
who's fifty-four, and he would not qualify as a senior, so I just was curious why.
Um, Wayne has, um, actually, um, sent in a resume to volunteer in reference to senior, um, organizations. He is a, um, I'd be more than happy to give you his resume. Um, he is someone who, uh, is a, uh, social worker for senior citizens. Um, so he's actually, um, asked, because he is a very good person for communication, to be able to distribute information, and because there's so many representatives of different senior groups at that meeting, I thought that he would be a good person to add to that, and because again, not having the availability to go to all the senior readings, um, whether it's, you know, the, the lunch group or whether it's the incorporated, this way it was just everybody together collaborating, because that's what that group does, is collaborate.
So you're not gonna, you're not gonna hold to a age requirement for the senior advisory committee? If they're not representing the other town?
There shouldn't be an age requirement just to be on a committee to join seniors' Inc. Maybe there's qualitative chance.
But, but is this a seniors advisory committee?
Well, it's a senior advisory, but he has the experience of twenty-something years working with seniors. I just think that he would just be able to add a little bit more information to get out, to distribute, and if people had questions, um, he's a great person. I mean, John's not available all the time during the day. I mean, otherwise, we can always have, you know, someone like that that's on there, but having somebody else from the outside, again, he has the experience, he has the, um, the background for it, and, um, it's, it's four meetings a year, so.
And the second, the second question, you know, I noticed that you've removed Anna Riordan, who is the Senior Nutritional Center Coordinator.
Yes. Yes, I've removed, I've removed Anna because Anna and Roseanne are both in the same facility at the same time, so for both of them to have to leave the facility to come to this meeting, they're both in the same place. One of them can really come and the other one can stay behind. It was really more about having somebody staying at the center so that both of them weren't missing.
Okay. And if, Mayor, if I could just, Roseanne, she'll, her title is clerk two. She's not the recreation coordinator, so that should just be corrected on here.
Okay. But that was, that was why I did it. It was really just logistics of keeping somebody in the building so that it didn't have to be.
Is there a motion, ma'am? Ready for that, Dave?
Um, a motion to accept the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee?
I'll make a motion.
I'll, I'll make the,
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'll make a motion accepting out the council liaison who hasn't been made yet. Everybody else on the list, yes.
Yes, yeah, I'll second.
That's okay.
Uh, moving on to the Firewise Committee, um,
Oh, all in.
All in favor?
All in favor, sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
Just moving right along, much faster. Um, the Fire.
Are we passing on Firewise and Doc's? You passed, uh,
Yeah.
No, I was just starting Firewise.
Okay, oh.
Oh, okay.
Uh, Firewise Committee, uh, we have Wade Crowley, our fire chief, Bernie Kachkowski, our fire marshal, Marie Galati, mayor, David Fenslaw, administrator, and Frank Steinberg, fire safety inspector, and I just, I didn't have the chairman or the council representative.
I'd like to nominate Rachel for the council representative.
I'd like to mon, nominate Scott Wallace as the chippers.
Who?
Scott, I don't think Scott Wallace is on here.
Are you kidding?
I don't think Scott Wallace is on here.
I want to think about that.
That's why I'm making a motion for the, uh, chairman.
Can we, can we discuss, have a discussion?
Well, yeah, of course, we can have a discussion, of course.
I think before anybody is put on a Firewise Committee, maybe we should talk to the fire department. I, I, that's just my suggestion.
Well, the Firewise Committee is about, uh, fire safety. It's about, uh, forest fires, so somebody from the Forestry Service like Scott Wallace should be in the committee.
May I re, say that again? You want to separate that for two? Nominate Rachel.
I'll second your nomination for Rachel.
Um.
You can table the nomination for the chairman if you like.
Um, yes, because honestly, um, Scott Wallace had reached out to me and I just, I have not gotten back to him, and I'm assuming that's probably what it was. So I'd love to have the opportunity to talk to him and then just bring that back on the seventeenth, if that's okay.
That's fine. Okay, so we're tabling the chairman, but there's a motion on the floor in a second for Rachel.
We have the vote.
So it's not a hundred percent clear. It goes back to the.
Can you speak out, please?
Yeah. Can't hear you back here. Okay. So, uh, a committee like the Firewise Committee is not a committee that's set up in the town's ordinances. It was set up by resolution at the time of either a grant or the time that the committee was established. So it's, you would have to go back and find the source resolution. I was actually just looking in our ordinance book to find the source resolution, which I don't see in our ordinance book.
Mm-hmm.
So I can't tell you off the top of my head whether it's a mayor appointment or a council appointment. Generally, on the committees, if there's a council representative, like in the, like the class three with the, the land use, generally, the council nominates its council representative, but if we wanted to be sure, we should look at the Firewise Committee source resolution.
So why don't you, so why don't you vote, can we, yeah.
Table the whole thing, yeah.
Of course.
I make a motion to table the whole thing.
I, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, Doc Committee has traditionally just had the one member of the mayor on it, so if we can just, uh, make a motion for that, we can always add to that committee, obviously, um, as time goes.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, approval of resolutions, uh, twenty twenty-four dash one is the approval of the twenty twenty-four meeting dates.
I would like to make a motion to add an eight A to the schedule of correspondence.
She wants to have, uh, eight A correspondence, so if it's a fifteen, fifteen, yeah, correspondence, then everything that's received, it was very discussed.
It's like two pages past that. Over.
Or three.
So, oh, eight A, so in between eight and nine, you'd like to add correspondence?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
They live under the agenda portion of issues added correspondence.
Twenty twenty-four dash one.
So they're adding, uh, eight A correspondence to the structure.
Okay, got it.
Do you have a motion in a second on that?
Yeah.
I make a motion.
I make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have to roll call anything?
Yeah.
No, no, you don't, as long as it's not money. If you're, if there's, if you're paying a bill or spending money, you should, oh, if you roll call, think, other things, you can do all in favor.
And then can, you make a motion to move the whole thing now, right?
No, it's, it's, that's, that's.
Oh, that's, add it and then the.
Yeah, we just amended the reservation, so that's fine. Everybody agree on the topic.
Uh, so we have next, twenty twenty-four dash two, the approval of miscellaneous organization items, items.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The approval of the official newspapers?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Authorization for the annual tax sale?
Make a motion.
Twenty twenty-four dash four, I'm sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Twenty twenty-four dash five, authorization to waive late fees on the check payments?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Does that have to do with the?
No, it's a procedure.
Oh, perfect.
Authorization for the cancellation of fees less than ten dollars?
Motion.
Second.
Twenty twenty-four dash seven, legal defense of tax appeals.
We have, I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm used to sitting on the council side. Uh, twenty twenty-four dash seven, legal defense of tax appeals?
Make, motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Borough Holidays, uh, twenty twenty-four dash eight?
Make a motion.
Second.
Uh, just for discussion, I just had them add January second, twenty twenty-five, just because when you're looking at this, it shows you already that we're closed until January first.
What do you mean you added January second?
I'm sorry, January second, twenty twenty-five, to the end for the reorder meeting?
No, it's the first.
No, no, no. The holiday is January first.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong, so I'm on the wrong schedule.
So we're meeting Thursday, January second?
Yes, Thursday, January second.
Right. Yes, yes, thank you.
Do we have a motion to second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have the appointment, uh, twenty twenty-four dash nine, the appointment of David Fenslaw as Joint Insurance Fund Commissioner.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Twenty twenty-four dash ten, authorization for the application of a tonnage grant?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the Civil Rights Resolution?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, I had made an amendment to the approval of the twenty twenty-four cash management plan. However, I recert, I received an email today from the CFO. So until I can actually get a legal opinion on that, can we just table that to the seventeenth?
We can do that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Authorization of heading cash fund. Authorization of heading cash fund?
Motion, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approval of the current temporary budget?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Hoppercamp.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, uh, twenty twenty-four dash fifteen, approval of the sewer temporary budget?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Hoppercamp.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Twenty twenty-four dash sixteen, approval of the water temporary budget?
Motion.
Second.
All in roll?
Mr. Hoppercamp.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. The appointment of professional services for contract for municipal attorney. I still have RFPs that I'm still going through for municipal attorney, so I do not have an attorney to put forward. However, we do have the holdover of John Urson, who will still be here. Um, so we have an attorney. Um, we would just, um, I'd do that at a later date.
Motion to table.
Mayor, is your, um, is, is the situation the same all the way down to municipal planner?
Um, no, because there was, there was for municipal attorney, the labor attorney. Um, the department, uh, departmental hearing services was Lottie Clark and Ryan, and we had just that one RFP that came through. So we can, um, we can present that. Um, we can also, um, uh, present the bond attorney.
Okay, I, I'm sorry, I interrupted, but I was just gonna suggest that you could move some of them together.
Oh, together, okay, so.
Yeah, yeah, but if, but if there's differences, then I shouldn't interrupt.
Yeah. So I, again, I would just be asking, which rather just table that. So, uh, the labor attorney, we also have, um, several RFPs for the labor attorney that, uh, we haven't gone through. Um, and again, I apologize, it's just everything is just all at once.
Motion to table labor attorney?
Second.
Um.
All in favor?
All, all in favor?
We're making a motion to table seventeen and seventeen A.
Seventeen and seventeen.
Correct.
Right.
So twenty twenty-four dash eighteen is authorization of professional services, contract for departmental hearing services. Uh, that was, uh, Fred Knapp from Lottie Clark and Ryan, that was the only, the RFP that we got for that. Um, is there a motion for that?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, uh, resolution twenty twenty-four dash nineteen, authorization of a professional service contract for the bond attorney, that was, um, Archer. Um, and we have, uh, the RFP for that.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, authorization for professional services, twenty twenty-four dash twenty for municipal engineer. We have, um, uh, several of the RFPs. Um, I've actually just gone to start looking at some of the sites of some of the locations of projects and things that they've done. If we can, uh, possibly, uh, table that to, um.
So is that twenty through? So is that twenty through?
Twenty twenty-four dash twenty?
Yep, twenty A, twenty B, twenty C.
Down.
Twenty A, twenty B. Twenty, it's just twenty.
So twenty, twenty and twenty one.
Oh, A, B, C, D.
There are different positions.
Yeah, they're all different. Right, so you gotta do each one individually, okay.
Move to table twenty?
Okay. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Um, so the, uh, water sewer engineer, I have not gone through, nor have I gone through, um, the municipal planner. So if we can table those two.
Can we table in that clump, like John was saying?
Well, no, 'cause in between, there's three others, so I was just gonna table those two together.
Motion to table.
Is there a table V through Y?
Yeah, the, the. U through Z. No, she wants to inter- you need to go in between that, you said.
Yes.
So you, you start with V, let's, or what are we doing with A?
Most of it, most of it table twenty-eight.
An example. Thank you, Bradley.
Okay.
Second.
Call the roll.
Mr. Hoppercamp.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Yeah, a question on that, Mayor, the, so Mott McDonald would be a holdover if there was any engineer?
Yes, they're a holdover, yeah. I'm sorry, Matt Mc- Mott McDonald is our holdover for that. Um, so we do have an engineer, the borough is not engineerless. Um, uh, but the R twenty twenty-four, uh, twenty B, authorization of a professional service contract for core inspector is Mott McDonald. That's, uh, the RFP that we received for that. Um, can I have a motion for that?
Motion. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're not taking this. No.
We're referring to.
We're approving.
Twenty twenty-four, uh, resolution twenty twenty-four twenty C, authorization of a professional service contract for landfill monitor is Mott McDonald.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, authorization of professional services contract for municipal planner, if we can do that as a holdover?
Motion made.
Motion, second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, R twenty twenty-four twenty-one, authorization of a professional service contract for tax map maintenance was Mott McDonald.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, appointment of Sean Canning as a qualified purchasing agent?
Motion made.
Second.
Uh, just a little bit of discussion, I'm sure that you noticed that his fee has just gone up slightly. Um, when I had actually called to question that, they had actually said that there was just a lot more that they're doing when it comes to, to doing this. And it's just sort of the price of doing business, but we've used them for quite some time, so I just.
Excuse me, Mayor, is it possible to shut the speakers off? We don't hear you talking through the speakers, it's just making noise, we hear you guys talking up there.
Okay, sorry. Uh, is there a motion in the second for that?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, appointments of Skyline Risk Management, uh, Inc., the risk management consultant, resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three?
Motion. Second.
Um, just for discussion, I will say that when I came in on Friday and I started making my phone calls, the only person that actually called me back on Friday on New Year's Eve was the Skyline's Risk Management. So I thought that was really nice that they were checking their messages and were still available to answer any questions that I had. So I just wanna make sure everybody knows that. Uh, do we have a motion in the second?
We can.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, uh, resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-four, hiring of Kennedy and Madonna LLP as special counsel?
Mo- motion made.
Second.
Uh, for those of you, um, that are not aware in the audience, uh, Kennedy and McDon- Madonna are the attorneys that were part of the class action suit for the PFOS, um, against, uh, BASF. Um, and we have to still retain them because that's not finished yet. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, award of contract for payroll services to Action Data Services?
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That brings us to, uh, public comment. Uh, please, uh, remember, public comment is up to five minutes. Uh, we ask that you address the council and not the audience. We also ask that, um, that you be civil in what the conversations are, and, um, we would love to hear your comments. Uh, can I have a motion, go public?
Motion.
Second.
Any public? Could you just state your name and your, um.
Address.
No address.
Just your name.
Just your name.
Um, last time we had a meeting, I was concerned about the administrator. And who wrote the letter? And why it's necessary? Let me put my glasses on. The state of New Jersey requires the administrator of the borough to reside in the state of New Jersey. Why then do this borough apply and receive an exemption from the state for him to live not only outside the borough, but outside the state? Since he has no desire to reside in our borough, we are now, are we now searching for a new administrator? Who is not only willing to reside here, but also finds, finds it necessary, meaning that in past agendas, found it necessary to appoint higher and as borough deputy borough administrator or an assistant administrator to help him and consolidate groups of departments that will require five directors? Just the fact that he needs the position to be created is a concern, is a con- is very concerning to me. Now to Bradley. He volunteers his time to inform the Hopakcon seniors every month. And might I add, he does not bolt out, he sticks around and answers all of our concerns for the seniors. On the flip side, when Bradley was ill, there was not a member of the Hopakcon seniors, did not say a prayer for his speedy recovery. It says something for volunteering in this community. So to the mayor and the council, our community is here for you and has a wealth of volunteers who are educated and skilled, some retired, that are willing to give back to Hopakcon. Just tell us what you need. Please, do not add more layers of bureaucracy and unnecessary costs which might result in higher taxes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Back to you, sir, you stand first.
Sure.
You're fine, bud. I'll stand west with the people here.
Really? I'm Alex Rubenstein, mayor of Byram Township. I'm just here to congratulate the folks that won the election this past cycle, newly installed. Just wanted to say that Byram is your neighbor, we're here for you if you need anything. Any kind of service, uh, shared services or any other thing, ongoing things anyway that we can help and work together, we are here for you. Just wanted to introduce myself, I'm a very reachable guy, my cell phone number is on the township website, if you want to reach out to me, anytime. Just wanted to say that.
Thank you, thank you.
Congratulations.
Good morning. Martin Straka, uh, what'd he say? Uh, actually, I just wanted to congratulate Marie, Jennifer, Rachel, uh, for the successes that you brought. I know that not everybody on this administration necessarily agrees, and I hate the term lockstep, put in lockstep, uh, with each other. And I can only hope that, recognizing that there's people in the town that wanted to see some change and that you would be open-minded to all working well and working together and just make it all happen. I mean, we've got a great little town here that's got some great successes in the past, and some of you have been greatly involved in that. But some people have chosen to, to clear certain paths off, and so let's just make the new way go forward, let's make it bright, and let's have fun. Make it happen. Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone, congratulations, Rachel, Marie, Jennifer, and nice to see everyone back. I think my suggestion is that we should have more transparency on social media from our mayor and council. And I think if we get something, either a mayor or council page or some kind of a page where you are feeding information out to the community, will kind of circumvent some of this nonsense that's going on. Fire drills, false information, people's opinions. If it comes straight from the source, no one can really question whether it's a real thing happening or not. So, I know we have a social media policy put into place, and I think there's a way that we can work in a way that you all can put together a page. I'm sure you have someone skilled who's on payroll, who can fill in the updates, send people notifications, let people know what's going on. So we have a little bit less divided mayor and council and community, and maybe there'll be more unity. And there'll be less of the crap going around on the internet with the eighteen thousand Hopakcon online pages that are out there. Thank you.
Um, if, if I could just address that one, um, everybody knows that, you know, I'm not a Facebook person, I just got there, I think I have forty-two friends, I'm way, way, way fun. It wasn't that funny. But I will say that, um, I have reached out to, uh, there's several companies that do exist that allow the municipality the ability to send out text messages, emails, um, all different kinds of informational sources. Um, you'll be able to, um, check whether or not you want to get two emails, eight, eight text messages. You'll be able to figure out exactly what you want to get. Again, just getting the information that we're gonna have, hopefully, we can have something like that up and running really soon. It's great to have the Nixel system, um, and I think that we can get a lot of our messages out. But there are other things that are happening all the time, there's always things happening at the wellness center. And we want to be able to get all that information out to everybody because there's no point in having, um, something like the wellness center or a parade or something, and, and not everybody knows about it. The idea is to get as much information out to the public as possible so that we can have as many people as, at many events or wherever the need is there. Um, plus, if you do get information and somebody else isn't getting it, you yourselves can also disseminate the information to somebody else. So yes, that's definitely something that we're looking into. Um, the Facebook page obviously is not one of my strong points, it's just somebody else. But we're definitely gonna get the information back out to the public, but thank you. Anybody else?
Well, first off, congratulations, Mayor, counts on your recent, uh, appointments. Uh, my name is Henry Sardana, born and raised in a pack on forty-six years, volunteer in many organizations in towns, most people see my face around. Uh, I'd like to, uh, you, you guys have discussed it earlier, I'm curious on the, um, borough attorney, John Urson, where he's had ethics complaints substantiated by the Sussex County Supreme Court in July twenty-one. He's also has family ties to Mike Francis, who was recently voted out. Uh, further, he also represents the town's largest landowner. So I kind of find that there should be some kind of ethical problems with that alone, besides being, you know, with the town as well. So with known as, uh, his past substantiated ethics complaint to the borough, uh, where he's also lost his job, uh, the people of Paccon showed by voting out three to pass incumbents, just want to make that known.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone, I'm Ida Brown, I'm currently the president of the Hopakcon seniors, as well as now the continued chair of the mayor's advisory board. Um, I've worked with almost all of you in one way or another, and I certainly look forward to doing that again in the future. Um, it's been a pleasure working with most of you and working with all the projects and things that we've had over the years. I want to congratulate Marie, and Rachel, and Jennifer. And again, I wish all of you the best. I concur with the gentleman behind me who said, let's all work together because this is a wonderful community. I am proud to be a part of it, and I think all of us in this room are be proud to be a part of it as well. So, we look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Any more public?
Hi, Sam Morris, and the mayor of Mine Hill, I want to congratulate, you look really good there, Mayor. Welcome to the club, welcome to the club. First thing I'd like to do is like, invite me to a demo, we just, Mine Hill just put in a new system called Civic Ready. And we had a councilman who's an engineer who moved to Massachusetts, and he put it in his town up there, they, it's great. And you can make as many subgroups as you want, so you can have just one for your seniors. And Mine Hill, we have lots of seniors, they're not internet people, they're not, they're almost to your level, but they don't have internet, so just call. And it says, hi, this is so-and-so from the town of Mine Hill, so they know it's not a, a spam call. There's a seniors meeting, there's a inoculation, there's whatever. There's a seniors meeting, there's a inoculation, there's whatever, so just for that group, you can make one just for water bills or my metal commission, anything you want. And it also does the FEMA, uses the FEMA list, so you have to clear the streets or the electricities out, you can use it, so if you wanna come up and we, we just implemented it so you can get a free look and.
I would love to.
Yeah, my assistant can show you, but I'm, I'm. I'm, I'm here representing myself, Mark Taylor of Florham Park, Mayor of Chigwin of Wharton, um, you know, Billy is now the, uh, president of the legal municipalities, so, and he's fifteen minutes from here, so you have as many resources as you need to help do the things that you need to do. Um, you need the legal correct answers from the state of New Jersey, not the political answers, and that's how we all try to operate, um, and we're all here to support you, and, and all of you, anybody that has anything you wanna talk about. We, a lot of us, we just want towns run right, because when things aren't run right, I'm not talking about Hopaccon, but in other places, big article about people taking benefits in central Jersey, and, you know, council people who work two hours a day costing their towns thirty grand in benefits, makes us all look bad. Everybody should just have good government, everybody here deserves good government. This, I'm entering my fourth term, since my thirteenth year as mayor, nobody ran against me, and we're here for you, whatever you need.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Not hearing any, motion bring it back?
Motion.
Second.
Mayor, if I could make a statement?
Yes.
Based upon the comments, and, and I'm in agreement with, uh, many things that were said tonight. Uh, I would just like to go out and say that the, uh, majority of council, I do believe you now, uh, support all in any initiatives, initiatives for open transparency. And I'd like to ask the BA to act speedily to create, provide the boroughs video broadcasting capacity, especially as we're in the winter months for our senior seni- citizens, so that we can go live, and, uh, there is also the possibility through, uh, cable vision to actually broadcast, so that's another possible option that you may or may not be aware of. Um, I believe this is prudent, uh, to keep our meetings open, especially in light of the ongoing Sussex County prosecutor's investigation and the attorney general's investigation that's reported by our new mayor. We are also aware of other investigations, and we welcome them as well. We will not stand for any form of corruption in our proceedings. We eagerly await any and all findings that we will try to report back to you as soon as possible upon receipt. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome, would you like to continue with council comments, do you wanna start council comment?
I didn't know that was on the agenda.
Yes.
Um, I just did mine, yeah. I got, I got four agendas here, I wasn't sure where we at.
It's been a rough, it's been a rough few days, Bradley, I apologize. Um, okay, so, uh, do you wanna start with one?
Sure. Let me, uh, it's somewhere. Uh, just let me go over the calendar with you guys real quick for things happening at the Wellness Center. Um, here we are, stuck to one of your agendas. Um, I just wanna let you know that next Wednesday, the tenth, the Journey Bus will be in the parking lot of the community center from ten to two, ten AM to two PM, so if anyone needs any county resources, they come down every other Wednesday, and they have a beautiful, a beautiful bus, it's like a living room in there with computers and to, they'll connect you, they help, uh, build your resume, they connect you to county resources, um, utilities, things like that, so just visit the bus if anyone needs to, or if you know someone that needs to, um, that will be there in front of the community center on Hopaccon Road from ten to two. Um, I also want to point out that next Wednesday as well, at six thirty PM, we have our newly begun Valor Clinic. So that's from Veterans Unstoppable, but what it is, is a support group for any first responder, police, fire, ENT, uh, military veterans. Everything is, is free, it's private, it's a safe place, anyone suffering with PTSD, we now have this group at the community center, um, that will give any kind of support to anyone in, in that field, first responding. We all know that people are still suffering, um, from the events that unfolded on nine eleven and those that were there. Um, so we've been working at this for a year now to get this, this group in here, and so Veterans Unstoppable, it's a great group. So I do invite anyone that needs that, it is private, I don't pop in, I let the, uh, I let the, um, PTSD coaches in, uh, they're veterans and first responders themselves, so they can meet you where you are and relate to you in a way that many people cannot, so I just let them in, they have coffee, refreshments, and a couple of hours, uh, to donate to us, so that's next Wednesday. Also, next Thursday, the eleventh, we have the Center for Prevention coming to the community center from three to seven PM. That's also another time if anyone needs any support, resources, um, any, any assistance from the county, she's there for four hours to give that, she also does Narcan training, if you would like to avail yourself of that opportunity to get free Narcan training. Uh, we s- we moved out a lot of coats, a lot of people came in for coats with our annual winter coat drive, but we've also gotten a bunch more in, the most beautiful stuff that people have donated. So I just wanna say thank you to everyone that's donated to our community center to help make the load a little bit lighter for our families, uh, people that are struggling in our community. Um, it does not go unnoticed, so if you know anyone that still needs winter wear, we just, we do have more that came in, uh, hats, scarves, gloves as well, so I think that's it for now, until our next time together.
I have one question, the Center for Prevention, is that specifically, um, it's not wellness care, it's, um, resources?
Well, she, she, well, she can, she does deal with, uh, wellness care, so we've had people that are in, say, abusive situations. Um, it's way after the police have been called, and now we, now they need to be, uh, propped up, you know, uh, they need resources for counseling.
Hmm?
And, um, so Center for Prevention, uh, does, so they deal with domestic abuse, drug and alcohol abuse.
Hmm.
Any, any, any substance, anything where someone is being mistreated, abused, or just addict, or even addicted, they have resources, and they're, they have hands that reach out all over the county, so if they need Daisy, they'll call Daisy Down. Um, Daisy is domestic abuse, um, uh, organization that helps women and children in domestic abuse situations. So, the Center for Prevention, i- it's for anything that you are struggling with, um, but mostly substance abuse and, and, uh, training as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Johnson? It's weird being on this side, just, um. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's the way they can hear you.
Um, I am absolutely honored to be back at the dais, I wanna thank all of the voters for putting their trust in Madam Mayor Marie, myself and Councilwoman Rachel Rodriguez. Um, I wanted to bring up the fact that, um, Marie has already accomplished one of her campaign promises, and that is putting the second public comment back on for the meetings. Um, that was the first thing that she said she was going to do, and she did it. Um, she's also instructed Rachel to already have met with Quicktext, which happened last week, to put any live streaming, um, capability for us, so I don't have to continue to videotape and post them to YouTube, that will be done post haste. And, um, I just wanna tell everybody that I look forward to, to serving the community, I hope that everybody up here serves the community, and we, we do what we were elected to do, and that's to work for you, thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, Nathan? Uh, since there's so many people here that are not usually here, I'm going to pitch one of my favorites, which is Safely Back Home, which we brought to, um, our community, and it's a system for, uh, children and seniors that wander or run away from home, and it's a T-shirt or a backpack or a hat with a code number and the police's phone number. Um, and many of these people cannot communicate, and they get lost, and in the past, the police would just have to put them in their car or handcuff them or whatever, and it's a much more wonderful, helpful situation if somebody gets lost. Um, they can call the, the Hopaccon police who will tell them their name and who their parents or their caregiver is, and they'll get them home safely and carefully, and it's a wonderful program, we've had, um, over twenty-five children in our town are on the program, and, uh, both Smile Houses are on the program, so if someone gets lost, you see someone wandering with a patch on their left arm or a hat or a backpack with their patch that says safely back home, um, please look at them, notice them, and if they look like they need help, call the phone number and stay with them. Um, in addition, we aren't, the seniors aren't utilizing it yet, and I know there are a few out there that, uh, the caregivers are being worn out because they're so afraid of losing someone, and a lot of the people that have Alzheimer's or dementia do not like to wear bracelets, uh, GPS, they just don't want anything like that. And this is a very soft patch that can be washed, and it, and it will not wear off, and it is a fabulous tool to keeping all our people safe, and if you're interested, it's on our website, or you can contact me, and I will direct you to how, be become, it's free to our town, we pay for it, for, um, the people that have signed up, so if anybody has questions, let me know.
Thank you.
That's great. Councilman Smith?
Thank you. Um, I feel like the kid who left his homework at home. I do know, uh, not this Friday, but following Friday, on the twelfth is the first meeting for the Sussex County Chamber of Commerce of the year, uh, hope you will join me if you're a business owner in town.
Where is that?
That's up at the Andover Diner.
Andover.
Friday, it's the second Friday of every month, at eight AM.
I'm sorry, repeat the location?
Andover Diner. It's a meeting of the Sussex South Chamber of Commerce Council. That's the next event, um, other events will be coming up there on the website if you look at, uh, SussexCountyChambers.org. Uh, I don't have the calendar for the SCNUA in front of me, but I was on that committee, so, uh, just go to SCNUA.org and go click on the right where the calendar is, and that's where all the, uh, paper shredding is, the recycling days, the Sharps disposal days are listed there on the right-hand column. I do wanna take the time to say, Jen, welcome back.
Thank you.
Marie, welcome back, congratulations, you look good up there. And welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Alright, I'm the newcomer, um, thank you all for your support, I think the one thing I wanna make clear is, um, the battle that we fought for politics is done, right? So our vision is to move forward, so whatever bad feelings there were, things said, it's, it's behind us at this point because dwelling on it doesn't fix anything. So our focus is the borough and the people, and really making the best of everything, uh, this borough has to offer. Um, I do want to actually thank, uh, former councillor Richard Larr, who's here, John Young, as well as Mike Francis, this is, we were on opposite sides of the ballot, but we all were working towards the same goal, for the borough and for the residents, so it's a, it's a thankless job, so it's still a lot of time that you guys put in, so I wanna thank you for, for the years and for the time and everything you did. Um, also, being the newcomer, I have a lot to learn, so that means I'm gonna work twice as hard to get up to speed with everything, and I always wanna say I'm accessible, my phone number, ask me for it, I will give it to anybody, including, I have to give it to the council members up here, 'cause I don't have anybody's phone number. Um, I'm excited, I look forward to collaborating and talking to everybody to make sure everybody's voice is heard, so, um, if you have any questions, let me know, otherwise, I'll be here, and thank you for coming out.
So I would just like to say in closing, um, just a few things, um, for those of you, um, who are familiar with Hopaccon, you know, we do have the calendar that comes out that has the recycling and the garbage schedules and whatnot. Um, we actually, uh, this year, uh, we're changing it up a little bit, we're adding a lot of things in there that used to be in there um, many years ago, so that the public is aware of what's happening in Hopaccon, when it's happening. Um, the Lake of Hackon Commission meetings, the Seniors Inc. meetings, the Women's Club, um, uh, we're trying to get some information yet from scouts and things, and we're trying to put it out there so that it's a very good document, um, for people to have, to not just hang because it's their garbage and their recycling. So, um, we started working on that, um, so if anybody asks you about the calendar, remind them that January twenty twenty-four is still in the current calendar, they don't need to get a new calendar for that. Um, but that calendar will get out as soon as possible, and, um, we're looking forward to, again, getting a lot of information out that, um, we really feel that the public should have other than just the same, um, recycling information and whatnot, so, um, that is.